Seven o'clock, I will call the meeting to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Do we need to do a roll attendance vote? No, no. Okay, uh, let's see. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
That's perfect. Lori, thank you so much. Who would like to second?
I'll second that.
Got a motion by council member Sarah and a second by council member Mock. Uh, any further discussion? All right, Brenda, can we get help with the roll call vote, please?
Council member Pasco.
Aye.
Council member Mock.
Aye.
Council member Sayer.
Aye.
Council member Pershman.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Right, motion passes. All right, community comment. Presenters are welcome to address the city council for matters relevant to the city of Carver's authority for up to five minutes on matters that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Specific requests for information may not be immediately available, in which case we will follow up with you sometime after the meeting. The city council should not be expected to immediately act upon requests, however, we will try to follow up with them accordingly and may schedule items for future consideration. With that is anyone here tonight for community comment? All right, uh, moving on, we have no presentations and reports. We do not have any public hearings either. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by council member Mock.
Second.
Second by council member Pasco. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say that, um, I appreciate staff going after another ship grant through the public health department, so thank you for getting another grant for staff and then down for the community gardens.
I'm excited about the new fence at the community gardens, um, so I echo your, your comments, Kristi. Um, all right, Brenda here too, can we get help with a roll call vote, please?
Council member Pasco.
Aye.
Council member Mock.
Aye.
Council member Sayer.
Aye.
Council member Pershman.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes. All right, moving on to business items, we are at eight point one, the cul-de-sac parking restrictions. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the first of three, uh, parking-related agenda items for the city council. The first one related to cul-de-sac parking, uh, I did put in front of the council, uh, and then emailed council member Pershman. We did get two resident comments over the weekend related to the parking ordinances, so I, uh, put those out for you. Uh, this is related to, again, parking in a cul-de-sac, the language, uh, "No person shall park or otherwise leave standing any motor vehicle in any public cul-de-sac anywhere other than with the passenger side wheels against the outside curb of said cul-de-sac." So this would prohibit someone from parking frankly in the center of the cul-de-sac or double parking with a, uh, vehicle that's parked against the curb or in some instances, uh, vehicles have parked perpendicular uh, to the curb line. So we've had some complaints and understand that it's a, a public safety concern. The council has talked about this at at least two work sessions, um, and then we've also, uh, posted, uh, information about this proposed ordinance in the newsletter and on the website, so there may be, uh, folks in the audience who, uh, may be interested in providing, uh, opposition or support to the proposed ordinance here tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, um, thanks for calling up the two, this is double-sided, I did not catch that initially, so. Um, okay, cul-de-sac parking restrictions, is anyone here tonight to opine on cul-de-sac parking restrictions? All right, um, I think this one is pretty straightforward, so I'm gonna make a motion to adopt ordinance zero-three dash twenty-twenty-five pertaining to parking in public cul-de-sacs.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by council member Pershman. Any further discussion? Just for anybody who's watching at home or for anybody who's here for the first time tonight, this is the third time that we've discussed this topic, so I think this is probably, um, I think of the three parking-related issues that we're gonna be talking tonight, I think two are a little bit more straightforward and I'm anticipating less discussion, um, this is one of them, so that's why we didn't have any discussion. Um, with that, Ms. Good, can I get help with a roll call vote, please?
Council member Pasco.
Aye.
Council member Mock.
Aye.
Council member Sayer.
Aye.
Council member Pershman.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. All right, on to eight point two, the municipal parking lot restrictions. Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, this is related to parking restrictions within municipal parking lots. Uh, so the proposed ordinance is in the, uh, packet, again, we, um, announced this via the newsletter and social media website. Um, the foundation of the ordinance is essentially no parking in, uh, park or municipal parking lots from two AM to five AM. Uh, we do have some exceptions, one being, uh, overnight parking allowed during the Steamboat Days Festival from Friday through Monday. Uh, we are allowing overnight parking in the Broadway lot, uh, the Third Street West lot and Riverside lot to accommodate for, uh, winter parking for, for those who don't have any off-street parking, and then, uh, the Riverside Park lot related to, uh, just the times of the day that people, uh, may use the, uh, boat launch. And then there's also a provision where someone can, um, obtain, uh, permission to park overnight in lots based on, um, some unique circumstance, um, and I've communicated with the sheriff's office, so I'll be kinda designating that authority to them, so if someone has an issue after hours, they can call into the, the non-emergency number and get a deputy and, uh, explain their situation and get permission. Ultimately, this is to help provide, uh, our public services team the opportunity to provide needed maintenance and to, um, prohibit anybody from using, uh, city facilities for long-term parking situations. We've had people abandon vehicles, so on and so forth, so this is a, an enforcement provision that the sheriff's office asked for and our public services team, uh, we provided, uh, the sheriff's office too with a, uh, sample sign, so it'd just be, uh, no parking two AM to five AM per city ordinance, and the sheriff's office, uh, approved of that sign, so, uh, pending council action tonight, the, Paul would be ordering those signs and then, uh, placing them, uh, when conditions allow for it. So happy to answer any questions, again, you might have folks in the audience either in opposition or in support of the ordinance.
Great, is anybody here to share their thoughts on, on, or I'm sorry, municipal lot parking restrictions tonight? Thank you for shaking your head. Thank you. Um, okay, uh, council, any questions, comments, discussion on this one?
Uh, my only comment is, again, as you had said for the last one, we have looked at these many, many times, and, um, I'm really happy with the way this one turned out. I think, um, this covers the things that we needed it to, so, um, I'm good with it just the way it is.
Uh, the only question that I had for it, um, and kind of blending this one and perhaps into the next issue that we're gonna be talking about is if we're allowing folks to park their, at the, the parking lots that we're allowing folks to park overnight downtown, um, at the end of Broadway, Third Street and Riverside Park, what is gonna keep us, um, what is gonna keep somebody from not keeping their car there almost semi-permanently? Cause they'd be able to park there during the day, and now they'd be able to park there overnight. And I just wanna make sure that we're not overlooking the fact that maybe somebody would try to skirt the rules and perhaps keep a car there into perpetuity.
Mayor and, and council, um, there is a statute, I think it's, it's somewhere in one sixty-eight B in state statute that prohibits, uh, individuals from abandoning vehicles on city property. That would include, you know, on any public right-of-way or city-owned parking lots or other publicly-owned areas, and so if there was a situation where somebody did that, um, we'd be able to utilize that statute and tow it or address it that way. You have to prove that it's been abandoned. There, it had, some time would have to pass, but, um, you can certainly get there that way. There's been situations where I've relied on that statute to help cities remove vehicles that have been there for a long time. So I would, wouldn't anticipate people would abuse this sort of, if it became a problem, um, we could always revisit the ordinance and think about, you know, do we wanna incorporate some kind of maximum limitation and, you know, have another exercise like we've had the last couple of months with, with some of these ordinances to talk about, um, something that might not be working. I mean, theoretically, um, right now, there's no such restriction and they could be doing that, so.
Okay.
I don't know if that's.
Good point. Just kind of where I was thinking of, you know, unintended consequences, and you're right, it's absolutely something we can continue this conversation, although I hope to end it all tonight in terms of parking conversations. Um, all right, that answers my question. Any other questions? Eric, anything from you?
No questions, I'm also happy with, uh, how this one is written as well.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance zero-four dash twenty-twenty-five pertaining to parking in city-owned parking lots.
Motion by council member Mock.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Uh, I'm gonna give it to Lori, a second by council member Sayer, any further discussion? All right, Ms. Good, can we do another roll call vote, please?
Council member Pasco.
Aye.
Council member Mock.
Aye.
Council member Sayer.
Aye.
Council member Pershman.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes. All right, uh, moving right along to the on-street parking restrictions. Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, the last of, uh, the three related to parking, uh, the council's had a series of discussions and work sessions related to on-street parking regulations, uh, specifically, the city doesn't have any current maximum length of time a vehicle may be parked on a public street. Um, the council's primary discussion has been based on the maximum time allowed for continuous on-street parking, which, uh, has ranged from anywhere from two days to ten days. Uh, the proposed ordinance stipulates five days as a maximum, so you can see that, uh, language, we have talked to the sheriff's office. They, they do believe it's enforceable, but, um, as we kinda talked about in general terms, it can be difficult. Sometimes people park in the same spot by habit, um, and so they're, they're, you know, I only say that to say that this isn't a kind of a ready-made ordinance like the previous one you just adopted. If someone's parked and they're at two-thirty and they didn't get permission, they get a ticket, but there's some more nuance to an ordinance like this. Uh, just wanted to note, we've had some resident support, uh, some type of criteria where you don't have any maximum if you're parked abutting your property. Uh, I'd also like to share that there have been some folks that don't believe that fixes the problem, in their opinion, um, that they want it for, uh, both sides. Uh, multiple perspectives have been shared on this, the, uh, correspondence that I, uh, previously noted, but there's also some correspondence from a resident that's in the packet. Um, so happy to answer any questions, again, uh, we welcomed, uh, residents, uh, to opine on this ordinance either in opposition or in support, so they may be, uh, here to share their opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone here tonight to talk about on-street parking restrictions? Okay, uh, can you come on up, introduce yourself, give your address, and we have somebody participating remotely, Eric's on the screen and you need to use the microphone so that he can hear you.
All right, I'm Deb Lenzin and I live down, um, Main Street, and my grandson has his truck parked out there, and he pretty much parks in the same spot all the time, so we have freeway in, in between our, he doesn't park in front of our doors. So as long as it, do I have him park it in a different spot, you know, every couple of days or, you know, to not get a ticket for him?
Yeah, I think the answer to that would be what we're considering tonight is a time limit where it would have to be moved, and ideally, like, if he's using that truck to go to work every day, it's not an issue.
Okay.
It's not an issue. Um, you know, I think potentially, um, if somebody sees it there all the time, it doesn't mean that somebody won't call it in, but in my mind, that's not an issue and that you won't get ticketed because it's moved. And it's probably gone between eight and five or ten and six, you know, every day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming. Anybody else? All right. All right, council, now it is our turn. Eric, do you wanna go first on this one so that I?
Yeah, sure, happy to. So, um, we have spent an enormous amount of time on this, uh, and I've, you know, I've used all of our meetings and I've studied the information that's provided by staff, and I've, I've even had a chance to talk to some other city leaders just in my, uh, work outside of Carver, and what I've, the standard, uh, everywhere that I've seen is twenty-four to forty-eight hours. That is the standard, and again, this, what this is, is a tool that allows us to, uh, allows us to have an enforcement, uh, ability when none exists today. It's a, something we have when we need it. But I think that the, the desire to find consensus, um, amongst the five of us has really, for me, it's allowed this to creep beyond the scope of the concern and, uh, you know, my opinions have evolved on this. Uh, I, I propose we move it back to what is commensurate with most other communities, and that's, uh, twenty-four to forty-eight hours. I'm fine with forty-eight hours because, again, it's an enforcement tool. Uh, how many times does it get used? Probably not too often. How many times does it, what does it take for a resident to call in and say, "Something's gotta be done here"? Probably not too often. It gives us the tool, I don't think it's gonna dramatically impact, uh, anyone's life. I think if, I think allowing it to be multiple days encourages or, uh, may have unintended consequences of long-term parking that we're trying to avoid. So all of that said, um, I'm going to, to propose, uh, forty-eight hours for those reasons.
Thanks, Eric. Um, who wants to go next?
I can go next. Um, as far as, um, response on the number of days or hours, I'm still, um, open to the majority. Um, I, I will compromise. I, I will compromise. So that, um, is, is my stance on that, so I might have to circle back so I'm not giving you, giving you a clear, um, decision. But I do wanna really just say, like, even, we got this down to a one-page ordinance, a one-page memo from staff, is no reflection of how much time we've spent on it. I think we did a great job of getting it concise, and now it's a matter of just coming to a consensus on the days or hours. I also really wanna thank Mr. Dave Anderson for, he, there's also a memorandum that he included that really summarizes to kind of how we got to this point, so, um, a lot of effort into this. So that's, um, my comment, so I'll wait to hear what others have to say.
All right, um, thank you.
Okay, uh, I, it has, as those of you who have been listening to these conversations for the last month and a half are aware, I am not in support of this ordinance. I believe that it is attempting to address a problem that it cannot solve and merely inconveniences our residents, um, and as such, I do not support it. Um, I would, I would support it as something that would be able to be used to better enforce abandoned vehicle restrictions, however, that's not its intention at this time, and so I am not in support of this ordinance.
Okay, um, I am in support of this ordinance. I have heard, I've heard many, I mean, we've, we've all heard many sides of this, and I've had, um, a number of residents talk to me about this from many different areas of Carver, so it's not just, um, one section of, of our town that is being affected by this. I am still, I'm still with the five-day, um, as we had discussed at the last meeting, so I am in favor of the ordinance. I am for going with the five-day timeframe. Um, I, again, we've talked about this a lot of times, so I don't have a, a lot of comments beyond that, just because we've talked about it so many meetings in a row.
All right, um, I, I feel like we are all, like, talked about this issue, which is fair, cause this is the third time that we've discussed this. Um, at previous meetings, I went through and Brent did a great job of kind of summarizing what neighboring communities have, and kind of to Eric's points, um, Chan, the limit is forty-eight hours. Chaska, the limit is forty-eight hours. Waconia, the limit is twenty-four hours. Shakopee, the limit is twenty-four hours. I also think, and I've shared this again before, um, they kind of, whatever we think about, we effectively kind of have to double when we're thinking about this, because if I see a vehicle parked in front of my house for two days, on the third day, I'm gonna call the sheriff's department, and they aren't gonna say, "Sure, Courtney, we will be right out there, we will ticket within the next hour." That's not gonna happen. They're gonna come out, they're gonna chalk the tires, they're gonna chalk the area around the tires, whatever that procedure looks like, and then they're gonna wait another two days. So it's my concern that the longer we wait, especially when we kind of look at that through the lens of what will have to be doubled, um, that it's gonna be really frustrating for the user and will not get at what we're trying to do here. Uh, so with that, I support Eric's idea of forty-eight hours. I like a shorter time period. Again, kind of what we said to Ms. Lenzin, um, for folks who use these cars daily or use these cars really every third or fourth day, there will be no impact, because you will not get ticketed if that's moved once a day, if it's your daily driver and you're using it to get to work, or even if it's, you know, you work from home. I work from home and I still use my car quite regularly, so, um, I am not, um, I don't know that the impact for folks who aren't using the street as a parking lot, which is not its intention, um, I don't, I don't think that that's a, a solution. I think that forty-eight hours for me seems like the sweet spot, so, um, that's what I would like to see in this ordinance. I think just kind of describing how we got here at our work session, which was our first work session in February, it would've been February third, we wanted to bring folks here to opine and to share their thoughts with us tonight, um, and that's directly how this resulted, how we got these emails, um, but we wanted to come up with a time period, and we really, really struggled at how we got that. So we came up with five days as what we were gonna publish and as what we were gonna put in the newsletter, um, and just to get folks to comment on. Um, so I just wanted to kind of explain that and why we're working kind of from a assumption of five days. It goes back to you, Lori.
Um, I can support forty-eight hours.
All right, then with that, I will make a motion to adopt ordinance zero-five dash twenty-five pertaining, uh, uh, to parking on city streets with the amendment of making it forty-eight hours. Is that what you need from me, Dave?
Yes, that's adequate.
Okay. Not superb, just adequate?
It's superb and adequate.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, um, we've got a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by council member Pershman. Um, any additional comments? This has been a, a long discussion. I appreciate the resident engagement that we have on this, but I think that this is something that perhaps was overlooked in a, a needed ordinance. All right, Ms. Good, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Council member Pasco.
Nay.
Council member Mock.
Nay.
Council member Sayer.
Yes.
Council member Pershman.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes three-two. Thank you. Uh, moving on to eight point four, the United Properties Industrial Project Environmental Assessment Worksheet. Ms. Smith.
Thank you. It's been a while since I've done a Zoom share, so give me a second. Okay, I was, during that discussion, I realized that I put United Properties EAW as my first site, and I know council member Pasco would zing me on it right away. I typed the whole word out. So tonight, we're taking a look at the United Properties Environmental Assessment Worksheet, which I will call an EAW throughout the presentation because that's a long title for what it is. So the game plan tonight, I'm gonna go through a staff presentation. There's some members from the United Properties team and the StanTech team, so StanTech prepared the EAW. So I'll go through a presentation, we'll bring them up for part of the discussion. I suspect you might also have some questions for Aaron, the city engineer, and then the request tonight is a little bit clunky and we can talk through it, but we're looking for the council to adopt findings of fact, conclusion and record of decision for the United Properties Environmental Assessment Worksheet. So I'll talk through what an EAW tries to accomplish and what that resolution says, what our goal is tonight to move forward. So some project reminders, the project that we're talking about is being proposed by United Properties. The project, we, uh, up until recently have been calling it the JCP Property, so at the corner of Levi Griffin Road and Jonathan Carver Parkway, it's roughly thirty acres, and United Properties is proposing two one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-square-foot buildings. So August fifth, the city council reviewed the concept plan, I have it on the next slide as a reminder, and then January sixth, your most recent action was reviewing the annexation, which has been processed by the state, so the property is now in Carver city limits. The project being proposed is a build-to-suit-light industrial office and warehousing use, which is, uh, in alignment with our comprehensive plan, and the EAW contemplates five hundred employees and tru- twenty truck trips per day. So again, uh, the project in general is in alignment with our comprehensive plan, again, recently annexed into the city limits, and the concept plan has been reviewed by planning commission and city council.
Can I just, twenty truck trips a day, that feels low.
Let's wait till Courtney's up here.
Okay.
Uh, so on the screen now is the concept plan that you saw in August, so showing the two east-west orientation buildings by United Properties, access off Levi Griffin Road, and then the extension of Commerce Drive, which is the north-south road that was constructed with Lakeview Industries. So a couple of access points, again, concept plan really rough, uh, doesn't show a ton of details, but we start to lay out how a site could operate, so as we learn more, the project obviously changes, but this was the council plan that was reviewed by the city council. So let's talk through what an EAW or what an environmental assessment worksheet is. It's required by state statute depending on a project size, so that can be number of units for a residential project or square footage for a commercial industrial project, such as this one. The EAW is not meant to approve or deny a project, so this isn't something that hinges for approval, it's something that guides approvals and permitting. So if you look through the EAW, there's several tables throughout the document that shows the types of permits that will be required, so the proposer can say, "Yes, we're working towards those permits," and then receive comments from those groups as well. I think it's really silly that, uh, it can be brought down to just twenty questions to be answered about a project's effect on a community, because the work that goes into an EAW is really impactful. As you reviewed, it's a large document, so saying like, "Oh, it's just twenty questions," which makes it sound small and cute, is not, not the best representation of what an EAW asks of a project. So certain categories are looked at, so land uses, climate adaption, wildlife historic properties, visual air, so any impact that a project could have to the environment, built or natural, that could happen through construction and then full development. So again, it was prepared for United Properties by StanTech, so we'll have them come up and join the conversation in a minute. So the purpose of an EAW is to determine if an envi- environmental impact statement is required, which is commonly known as an EIS. So that is the goal of the EAW, to determine if an EIS is required. So if an EAW discovers there's a significant- So if an EAW discovers there's a significant impact on some topic that was studied, council could request an EIS as prepared. So typically, that would say, uh, that there is a native habitat or species on the property that requires more attention. So that could require triggering of an EIS. So the goal of an EAW is to determine, determine if an EIS is appropriate or not. So it does not grant land use approval, will continue through that process. And an EAW is largely designed for agency review. So there's, on the next slide, you'll see all the agencies that see this document, comment on this document. It's kind of their, part of their bread and butter, so they come in, they take a look at them, they provide comments. So again, an EAW does not contemplate land use approvals. So the city, should we continue to move forward, will process preliminary plat, rezoning, and final plat. And then something to note is that a lot of the review we do through, through those processes also contemplate things that the EAW thinks about. So we think about traffic counts and how truck circulation works through our plating process. So just because a project doesn't have an EAW does not mean we're not thinking about some of these things. It's just the size of this project required that EAW. So we're completed to date as the development team, StanTech, and United Properties prepared a draft and submitted it to staff. Erin and I met with them, provided some comments, and asked for some revisions on sections of the EAW. The EAW is uncirculated to required agencies for a thirty-day review. I will not read all the agencies that are listed there, but it runs the gamut from the Environmental Quality Board or the EQB to the National Park Service. So it's a large group of agencies that reviews the information to provide comments. The request, uh, was, the thirty-day request happened, and then four comment letters were, were received, which is included in the EAW, and we can talk through with the development team. So, all of the parts of an EAW are important, but I pulled out some that I think are of note and might be part of the council's discussion. So, uh, there are some impacts to wetlands on the property, which is typical for development if a project is wet. So it's not atypical that a wetland might be impacted. The project is not anticipated to involve the storage of chemical or hazardous materials. There are no above-ground storage tanks. The Natural Heritage Information System does not identify any records of rare features or species on the site. And the proposed project is not anticipate, anticipated to emit vapor, significant air emissions, dust, or odors. We do anticipate increased traffic volumes, patterns, and roadway access. So that's, my next slide goes into the traffic a little bit. Erin and I have reviewed the information as well. So any questions you have, traffic is one of those that we can touch, we can figure out, we know how the intersections work. So it's one that we look at really closely, especially knowing how many trips might come in and out of the site. So the traffic addition, of all things, are important. So a full traffic study is included as part of the EAW, which is great, gives us a lot of information. With this project, we do anticipate a signaled light at Levi Griffin and Commerce Drive. So for this project to happen, we will likely install a full traffic light at Commerce and Levi Griffin Road. And then there was one turning motion from Levi Griffin Road onto Jonathan Carver Parkway that will require additional support. So we learned that through this traffic study, noting that one of the turn lanes, we likely will need to adjust the light. So on McConney Road at Levi Griffin Road and Jonathan Carver Parkway, the timing of the lights may need to be adjusted to allow additional traffic to make a motion. So it's, uh, going from Levi Griffin Road, turning south onto Jonathan Carver Parkway to enter into the two-twelve system. So that turn lane might require a dedicated light, or the timing may need to be addressed through the information we learned from the traffic study in the EAW. So comments were received from the Metropolitan Council, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, and Carver County Public Works. They generally were things to note, so things to remember, permits that are going to be required, and they are all included in the packet. I'm going to ask that Courtney comes up and joins us now, and we can discuss any questions, comments you have about the EAW. Do you mind introducing yourself too?
Yes, I can do that.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm Courtney Bott, I'm with StanTech, and I am one of our environmental review leads. I oversee a number of, um, specific experts that help answer all these questions, these twenty-one questions on the EAW. And yeah, on behalf of, uh, United Properties, I helped prepare this then in coordination with the city to confirm that the information put into the document was complete and answered the questions. Thank you tonight, esteemed mayor and council members for having me.
Traffic question.
Yes.
Twenty trips a day.
Yes, and I'm just going to say zinger question, right out the door.
Sorry.
Um, no, it's, no, no.
Sorry.
No.
I generally try to be kinder to Courtney.
Generally, no, I'm generally, I am really honestly teasing. Um, I do not have the appendices to our traffic impact study here with me tonight. So I'm going to explain in layman's terms how that is developed. So for this site, we looked at it that it would have office space and it would also have light industrial. Um, and so for those breakdowns, we basically looked at that this wasn't going to have like a distribution center type quality. And so, um, what I can tell you without having the backup to the traffic impact study is we weren't looking at this being a distribution center, we were looking at this more being like probably, um, more employee-driven. So when you look at the numbers that are in the traffic study, you will see there's a number of trips per day. I think we're at like a hundred-and-forty-one is what I remember in the AM. And then, you know, when you're looking at that, there may be twenty trips over the course of day, maybe ten trucks that we assumed coming in in the morning, ten trucks coming in and out in the evening. So that really wasn't the type of land use that was anticipated by the traffic impact study, more of the distribution type quality that you might be thinking, while that twenty is, is low.
Okay, and maybe that's what I was missing, the nuance of truck traffic.
He, yeah.
Big truck versus.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying.
Exactly. So even when we do the truck numbers, it's really looking at something that's going to like, take a longer queue time to get through an intersection, something that is going to have larger volume, maybe not even, you know, like a small delivery type vendor, that would still count just within like the regular car vehicle count, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions, Courtney?
I have a question, and maybe Erin, you can help with this too. So you just said, uh, for a stoplight at Commerce and Levi Griffin. Thinking about the traffic that's on that section of road is, seems a lot lighter than if you were actually on County Road eleven or even, um, to the east of the stoplight we have now. Why is this warranting a stoplight in that area?
I'm going to shoot it over to the other Erin.
Okay.
Yeah, so the study contemplated, obviously, this is, um, one, one area that's developing, but there's a larger growth area that's happening at the same time. So the study looked at basically what are the existing conditions today? And then what are the conditions going to be in twenty-thirty, when this project is anticipated, you know, full completion, opening day? And with, with those things together, signal warrants are met at that intersection due to the, the volume that'll be on that system at that time, because, um, obviously Levi Griffin Road is not going to be a dead-end road forever. There's going to be other things going on.
It also contemplates like the transportation facility by the school district, development on the Wickenhouser piece. So heavier transportation users north of the site.
All right, so do you envision Commerce Drive being extended north sooner than later?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's the question I had.
All right. Any other questions? Eric, you look like you're shaking your head no.
I was shaking my head no, no questions.
All right. All right.
I will make a motion to adopt resolution one-ten-dash-twenty-twenty-five, adopting the findings of fact, conclusion, and record of decision for the United Properties Environmental Assessment Worksheet.
A motion by council member Mock.
I'll second.
And a second by council member Sayer. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Good, can we have help with the roll call vote, please?
Council member Pasco.
Aye.
Council member Mock.
Aye.
Council member Sayer.
Aye.
Council member Pershman.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Can you find him in the email system? Yeah. Yeah. It's more of a commitment than you realize.
Okay.
He is from Hector, and he plays in a band, and he will bring you candy bars.
And don't talk about wrestling. Thanks, Courtney. Um, okay, moving right along, um, eight point five, the memorandum of understanding for the certified levy project adjustment.
Yep, good evening, mayor council. Tonight, we have a, an action that you can consider, and that's for executing of a memorandum of agreement. Um, that was between the housing, or Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Minnesota State Historic Preservation App, Office. Um, the city of Carver is invited as an invited signatory, because there are, um, terms within that agreement that the city of Carver would have to carry out, so that is why you are a signatory on that document. Um, but basically what this is, um, as part of the federal process, environmental reviews had to take place. HUD, who we received federal funding from, so that's the Housing and, or Department of Housing and Urban Development, um, they're the lead federal agency for this project, and we completed, um, these federal environmental reviews. Part of that, um, the State Historic Preservation Office, so SHPO, um, they reviewed it, and they had comments on the Spring Creek Levy System that is currently proposed, uh, specifically related to the floodwell system that, um, you have all seen in the past. The, the state recommended that that would have an adverse effect on the historic district of downtown Carver. So we've had a series of meetings with HUD and SHPO, um, we had them on-site, visited the site with us. But they were, they were very firm that they felt that there was a adverse effect. And HUD, as the lead federal agency, um, took the recommendation of SHPO and, and stated that, yes, this, the proposed flood wells would have an adverse effect on the historic district. So in order to officially turn the page and close the environmental review process, this memorandum of agreement is something that was drafted by HUD, and it basically lays out the mitigation measures that would be carried out. It's, it's allowing the project to move forward as currently planned, um, just with these stipulations that are contained within the document. So in my memo, I, I kind of summarized them all, but basically, number one, it's to document the current status of the historic district in this area. Uh, that's something that we've already done for the most part, so it's just a matter of kind of compiling the information and, and getting it organized. Uh, number two is if the design does change between now and kind of the final bid documents for the project, SHPO requests that they would be able to see those to make sure that the documents are still in line with the guidelines of, of the historic district, um, with the HPC. So that's number two. And then the third one was an interpretive plan, and that's something that we were actually already planning to, to incorporate into the project. We talked about either having like a kiosk or maybe some, um, some, what do you want to call it, engraving on the concrete. SHPO didn't like the, the hard stamp in the concrete walls, but suggested that maybe a kiosk or something else, um, was incorporated into the project. It, it allows us a lot of flexibility, it could be something about even as simple as putting something like down in City Hall that people could see when they stopped in to kind of see kind of the progression of the historic district. So, um, it's a very loose, um, term in this agreement, and I think we have a lot of flexibility to shape what that looks like. And since it is a stipulation, it should be funding eligible for, for the federal funding, so that's a good thing too. Secondly, just addressing anything that would happen during construction. So if there's something that's uncovered as part of the construction, um, basically stopping and notifying the agency of what was uncovered. So standard, standard things that we would do anyway. And then lastly, monitoring and reporting. So until the project is completely finished, um, the city needs to provide kind of an annual reporting summary of the steps that have happened throughout the year. So, um, again, a pretty simple term to carry out for this agreement. At the end of the day, like I mentioned before, um, the signing of this agreement will officially complete the federal environmental review process, and then it will allow the city to progress the project into the next phases, which would include he's been acquisition and movement into the final, uh, plans and specifications at a later date. So, um, this is kind of the, the milestone that we've been looking to hit. The project is, is more or less been on hold until this issue has been resolved. So, uh, the good thing is, we're, we're at that point now where, um, the city is the final signatory on this document, and then we can move into these next steps as I just described, so. Uh, with that, I would recommend that the city, uh, moves forward with this, and we can continue moving the process forward, so. Any questions?
So just so that I understand this, there was a new flood wall that we're proposing, or the levy work that we're proposing was determined to have an adverse effect. And with that, there are stipulations to kind of balance or correct that. But what I hear you saying is that these are either things that we already have on hand or would be doing anyways. So it's not a huge impact. Am I summarizing that correctly?
Correct, mayor. And I think it's more of, it's a point to really document that, yes, this was a determination, but these are the, this is the way that we're going to move forward and construct the project as intended. So it's, it's really just to kind of get this all on paper, and I think for the State Historic Preservation Office, that documentation is really important to them, so, um, I think it's a way to, to kind of formalize that too, and have that as part of history, so.
Great. Editorial comments, I think it's a bummer that this project was determined to have an adverse effect. I don't necessarily agree with that. And would say that perhaps millions of gallons of floodwater through downtown Carver would have more of an adverse effect on our community. But with that, it does sound like these are relatively minor steps and things that we would be doing as part of the process anyways, so.
Can I ask one quick question?
Please.
So Erin, uh, SHPO doesn't like the relief in the concrete, whereas I thought any measure to beautify an industrial concrete wall was great. Does this mean we acknowledge they don't like it? But could we still do it, or we're acknowledging they don't like it, so we're not going to do it?
I think that we probably, that ship has sailed, that was one of the things that they pointed out specifically. Their comment was that if you put something in a concrete wall that is intended to last, you know, fifty to a hundred years, the interpretations of, of history may change over time. And they, they felt that putting it on a concrete wall is something that would not be an appropriate thing to do, whereas if you have it in a, in a kiosk or have some, um, self-guided tour for an interpretive plan, that would be a more appropriate way to, um, complete that step. So that is the feedback that we received.
I have a comment.
I can't wait for this, I've been waiting all night.
Yeah. So I am also disappointed that the relief is not going on to that, um, flood wall. And I'm, I'm, this is also one of those editorial comments. History doesn't change, history is history, so it doesn't actually change. So again, I will just say there's a large disappointment in the fact that we can't have that, um, pictures of those relief on there. Because it does beautify a big wall that's going to be in downtown. If we can't change it, okay. Um, one of my questions then is, you know, we have the historical kiosks that are around our town. Do we have space in a number of places next to the levy, the wall, that we would be able to put those in down there? So that as people walked it, they would be able to view what is our history and will be our history, um, on those signs.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Not for me.
No.
Erin, I understand that this prohibits us from putting a historical image on the levy wall itself, but it does not have to be just a big gray wall, right? We can still do the like stamped concrete that makes it look like brick.
Correct, all the, the standard, you know, the textured finishes that we were contemplating throughout this process, those are all things that we're still planning to move forward with.
We can still paint it.
Yep, colored concrete, and, you know, to match all those things that we've wanted to do. Just the, the physical imprint of those images was something that was a sticking point for them.
Well, that will help a little, and Erin, my comment was not pointed towards you, I hope you know that.
Oh, yeah. Nor were mine, nor were mine. Um, okay, with that, um, I would make a motion to complete the execution of the memorandum of agreement between the Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Minnesota State Historic Preservation Office regarding the Carver Levy Flood Projection Project as an invited signatory. So glad they write these out for us.
I would second.
Uh, motion by Mayor Johnson, second by council member Pasco. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Good, can you please do another roll call vote, please?
Council member Pasco.
Aye.
Council member Mock.
Aye.
Council member Sayer.
Aye.
Council member Pershman.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, thanks Erin. Um, all right.
All right, eight point six. Commission appointments, the HPC and the Planning Commission. Ms. Gooden?
I'm going to scoot up here since
Please do.
I have lots of hats I have to do here.
That's fine.
Slide and roll call vote and no, no. Please bear with me.
Nope, you're fine.
So as a reminder, each year, commission terms expire, so every, terms are for three years. So every year we solicit applications from residents who are interested in serving on a commission. We did that this year again. We had three positions on our HPC and two positions on our Planning Commission. We received twelve applicants, applications. And eighteen interviews were conducted on Monday, February twenty-fourth. So I'm going to pull up this slide. And what I'm looking for tonight is appointments to be made to fill those positions.
And I think we had eighteen applicants and did twelve interviews, right?
Uh, no, we had twelve.
And did eight interviews? Right, one, two, three, six, seven, eight, twelve applicants.
Twelve applicants and eight interviews.
Sorry, I heard that wrong.
Okay. I probably said it wrong, so thanks for that. So what I'm looking for is if we want to, you can start with either the Planning Commission or the Heritage Preservation Commission. But before you, in yellow, are the positions to be filled. And to the right are the applicants, in no particular order other than alphabetical.
Let's start with HPC. Roll agreeable? That one feels like very straightforward.
You want me to start making motions? So I will make a motion to appoint Tim to, as a board member on the Heritage Preservation Commission with a term expiration of three, one, twenty-eight.
I'll second.
Um, sorry. Any further discussion on that one? Eric, I will look for you to wave wildly if you want to opine on any of these.
All right.
Um, all right, let's see. Can we do a roll call vote?
We can, and I'm having troubles keying into the screen, so.
Wouldn't it be easier for, especially for this one, to do one big motion?
We can, if that works, or we can't.
I agree with that.
I think that's fine.
I'd prefer they be individually done. I know that's clunkier.
Nope, that's fine.
But it works better for the record.
Okay.
Eric, we were overruled.
Yeah.
I can take the notes. I just can't get the names to pop up into this PowerPoint. I don't know if it's because I'm the one sharing. Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote on that while Erin helps me. Councilmember Pascoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Pershman?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion passes. Tim will be a board member with an expiration of his term being March first, twenty twenty-eight.
I don't have to do all of these. Again, I think the HPC is fairly straightforward here. So I'm going to make a motion to appoint Brian Parker to, as first alternate on the Heritage Preservation Commission with a term expiration of three, one, twenty-eight.
I'll second that. Uh, any further discussion on that one? Ms. Gooden, can we do a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Pascoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Pershman?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion passes. Brian will be, will continue to be the first alternate with an expiration of his term being March first, twenty twenty-eight.
All right, I'm going to do my best with the pronunciation of our third appointment.
Rahul Singh.
Okay, that is exactly what I was going to say. All right, motion to appoint Rahul Singh as second alternate on the Heritage Preservation Commission with a term expiration of three, one, twenty-seven.
I'll second that. Uh, any further discussion? Ms. Gooden, can we do a roll call vote?
Sure. Councilmember Pascoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Pershman?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion passes. Rahul Singh will be the second alternate with a expiration date on his term being March first, twenty twenty-seven. When we communicate with Rahul, can we just kind of explain how things work and why he only has a, a two-year term versus a three-year term?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes. And I will say on the Planning Commission, the, the order that I sorted them is alphabetical based on who interviewed, and then at the bottom were the candidates who were not present for the interviews.
For, planning, moving on to Planning Commission, I would like to make a motion to appoint Krista Goodell as a board member for a term that expires March first, twenty twenty-eight.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Pascoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Pershman?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion passes. Krista will be on the Planning Commission for another three years.
Just for clarification, so Sidney Monroe did not apply again.
Correct.
Okay.
She wants to be retired.
She wants to be retired, retired from all the things. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was reading this all correctly.
Yes.
Good for her.
I will make a second motion for Anna Dingler to be the second board member for a term expiring March first, twenty twenty-eight. Got a motion on the floor? And motion dies for lack of a second.
I would like to make a motion to have first alternate Eric Jansky move to a board member position ending in three, oops, sorry, ending in three, one, twenty-eight.
I'll second.
Um, sorry. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Pascoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Pershman?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
Nay. Um, motion passes. Three, two. All right, um, we have, Eric, congratulations. You have made it to a full board member with a term expiring on March first, twenty twenty-eight. With that, we have
Your paid doubles. There's paid doubles there.
Absolutely.
Congratulations. Yeah. Um, with that, we now have an opening for the first alternate. Correct, Brenda?
That is correct.
Okay, so I will
Can we choose from these candidates for that now?
Correct. Right.
I think the, I think is our procedure where Lincoln would move from the second to the first. So this is, this would be from the second alternate.
Okay, okay.
Well then, so I'm going to make a motion to appoint Reed Welch as the second alternate.
I'll second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Pascoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Councilmember Sayer?
Nay.
Councilmember Pershman?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Nay. Motion passes. Reed will be the second alternate on the Planning Commission. All right.
Great, thank you.
Done. Thank you. Let's see. Up next is the Minnesota River Congress Resolution of Support. Mr. Merrick?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. So that's your last work session. You had a presentation uh, from the Minnesota River Congress about their program and their advocacy initiatives related to water storage along the Minnesota River Basin. Uh, so just presenting a, a resolution of support for a city council consideration. I wasn't at the work session, but no recommendation from staff on this. This is strictly council prerogative.
All right. I will make a motion to adopt Resolution one oh nine dash twenty-five in support of managing water flows in the Minnesota River Basin through increased water storage and other strategies and practices.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by Councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion?
I have more of just a comment, and if anyone wants to reply. I appreciate this being part of our agenda. When it, when we first learned about it, I thought, oh, maybe this will just like pop up on the consent agenda. But I think this is something that others may want to discuss. I don't have anything to discuss, but I just appreciate that, that we have the opportunity.
I think, you know, we were all here two weeks ago. The presentation was a little bit rocky, but I want to be careful that that doesn't cloud our decision on this. I think that this is important, and I think it's a relatively innocuous motion of support for something that will benefit the city of Carver. Ms. Gooden, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Pascoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Pershman?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, um, we have one more item that is a carryover from our work session. So again, kind of transitioning into our kitchen table conversation portion of the meeting.
Do I, do I get my food back out?
Yes, you do. You can start eating. Um, that is the Summerfield project review. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we are going to do a project preview, which is a step that we are doing before the concept plan. So we have a couple of pretty big residential projects that are starting to work through the development process that we want to give you maybe a couple of meetings to digest what we're working on. So tonight we are discussing Summerfield. So again, there's no request tonight. It's just a preview of an upcoming project, some steps that we may be asked to take by the applicant. So Summerfield is proposed by Summer Gate. They're a project developer, not a project builder. So they typically develop lots and then sell them. So they most recently sold Oak Tree and Timber Creek to Lennar after bringing them through the process. Summer Gate has owned several of the properties in the project area since two thousand and six, or coming up on their twenty-year anniversary. Based on market changes and then city utility availability, or unavailability frankly, this project has not made it to the start line quite yet. So, uh, the project area was contemplated through the trunk area charge, which we've been talking a lot about for like the past two years. So, the fee that will be added at the time of plat for all platted lots of about, of thirty-three hundred dollars in that trunk area charge, which will allow us to fund the utilities from the bluffs down to the project area for Summerfield. So here's a concept that we saw in two thousand and twenty, so just a preview of how long we've been working on this general idea. So several of the acres are owned by Tollison, which is the Summer Gate Group. And then they have relationships, purchase agreements, first right of refusal with many of the other property owners in this area. So they know the area well. They know the people in this area. They've been working on this project for a long time. So you'll see anything in red on this map as Tollison or Summer Gate. Again, this was from two thousand and twenty, so we've been working on it for, just this version for about five years.
What's the purple star?
Where is the purple star?
I remember the project on the legend.
But it's also Tollison.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Something, something cool, special.
Oh, I hate it.
With the topography, I'm thinking slutty no.
That very well could be.
I appreciate you catering to your audience.
Thank you.
Vikings training camp.
Again, no.
So again, back to the trunk area charges, the slide should look pretty familiar to you. We've worked through it at work session and the city council level, and then incorporated the trunk area fee into the two thousand and twenty-five fee schedule. So there was the gap where city utilities stop at the bluffs instead of Overlook Drive. So we need to extend from Carver Bluffs Parkway down to Overlook Drive. Is that right? Is that the street north? Yeah. So there's that gap in our city system that we've been scratching our heads over. Casey from Summer Gate has been asking since I started my job here, like, when are you going to think about that? And two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five was the time that it was added to our fee schedule. So this slide should look familiar to you from the work we did with the trunk area charge. Yeah.
So I'm going to jump in think work session here, so we're loosey-goosey. But, uh, so we're going to, there's two buckets here. There's an engineering bucket, so the infrastructure stuff that Erin Smith talked about with utilities, but there's also a pretty big streets infrastructure component. So, uh, Erin Schmidt and I have been working with the folks from the county highway department. So at one point, the county had turn lanes planned for the intersection of forty and eleven, so I'll think eleven going to Jordan, that section. And so they delayed on that, understanding that this development could occur. So we, uh, there was a corridor study done in like, I think, twenty, fifteen, sixteen. So this area is planned for a roundabout to accommodate the development you see to the west, or the Summer Gate, Summerfield area. And then the, there's quite a bit of cut-through traffic from people going from one sixty-nine to two twelve. So those two factors create the need for that roundabout. And so Erin will get into some of the timing, Smith, about like the development. But, uh, later this spring, we'll want to bring an action for you to consider and start thinking about maybe the fundamentals of this. But this will be a pretty big project led by the city, and you'll have to determine kind of the criteria for this where we'll lead that whole project from a streets and underground utilities perspective. So, uh, for some of you, you might remember the cost partition agreement that we have with Carver Colony that we did on Ironwood Drive. Uh, we also use that for Levi Griffin. So it splits out costs of a county road improvement based on their policy. So the, the local share, the part that isn't covered by the county, would be covered by the city, but we transfer that cost to the developer. So, uh, our, um, communication to the Summerfield, Summer Gate team is that they'd be responsible for those costs. But some of the, the kind of initial steps that we'll need to take is to get council support or consideration to initiate that kind of planning prospect, or planning process from a, a civil engineering side. So, uh, we'll need to have Erin kind of lead the bolt and make team on creating concepts, or I would probably say a feasibility study that outlines costs, uh, location of utilities, deed to easements. Uh, but a pretty significant project, when you think of the cost of the infrastructure, was right around four million, four or five million. But then there's road costs, so, uh, we're going to want to take some time to do that. One of the concepts that we've talked about is, um, having Summer Gate, uh, sign some type of an agreement with the city where they prepay some of their trunk area charges so that, uh, we have enough money to fund some plans and specifications work from the engineering side of things. Uh, but then there'll also be a function on the finance side from Northland, Tammy, Omdall, and Lynn, where we'll go over the debt service requirements to pay for the infrastructure costs related to the underground utilities. So the goal of that trunk line charge is to fund the debt service so that it's not any additional charge for our current ratepayers. It's a, a charge that's kind of insulated for the folks that are benefiting and who are paying that fee. And then the, the road costs are something, again, the city doesn't have to pay for, but the developer would upfront that. Now, if the city wanted to do, um, some enhanced work at the roundabout beyond kind of what would be typical, we might have to have a conversation with, uh, the developer on that. But big picture, there's some pretty big kind of funding and process um, items related to engineering for the streets and utilities that are coming probably late this spring, early summer. Is that accurate, Erin?
Yeah, I'm sure Erin will talk about, there'll be a large environmental review process for this one too. So some of that might be able to run in tandem with each other. But yeah, first step is we really need to hone in on the actual scope of the improvements and get costs more narrowed down than this very rough estimate that we did a couple of years ago, so.
And Summer Gate is hoping to have access to utilities by fall of twenty-six. So we're in a position where, right, so we're, you know, plans and agreements are reviewed, considered, prepared, um, by the council throughout the summer and fall, where you'd be in a position to potentially bid the project probably about a year from now.
Is that a doable time?
Maybe.
See.
The engineer just smiles, okay.
Yeah, I mean, from, from an engineering standpoint, it's all doable. I think the biggest, the biggest thing we need to figure out right now is a legitimate schedule that works with all the pieces. There's just, there's so many balls in the air right away that that's kind of step one for Erin and I is we need to work with Casey and get a legitimate schedule with all the pieces put on paper.
I would add to that, so the, we want to give the council as much time as you need to review and consider the options, the costs, all those types of things. But also, if we start and say, okay, well, we're going to plan for the spring of twenty-seven, you know, that extends it out that much further. So we'll hope for fall of twenty-six. If we get there, that'd be great. Uh, but it's, um, the process will be what the process is, so we'll just take it from there.
Can I ask a question since the map is right here on the
Can I ask a question, since the map is right here on the slide? So we're obviously, we're going by Mount Carmel there, and there's homes that are already there, and I know that we don't force anyone to annex in, and some folks there may want to, some may not want to. How does that work if individual homes, say, I want? Does it have to be all or nothing in that area?
Generally, yes. So then they can create attractive land that would be buildable for a developer. So some of the home sites in that area are large-ish, but a developer typically wouldn't come in for like a one-acre project.
Not a developer. If they, if they came in as the homes are already there, so let's say I live there and I decide I want to connect to city water, does it have to be, can you do that singly?
It would not be advisable because you, the city would end up picking up all the costs, and so people would hopscotch around. So you'd have, let's just say that costs a million dollars to do, and if you only allowed, or if only two people wanted to do it, then you'd be funding the $800,000, and you know, there'd be $200,000 worth of costs paid for. So I've had some experience with those kind of existing rural developments that come on, and it's, it's already very difficult. For one, they go from a township tax rate to a city tax rate, so their taxes, in some cases, triple or quadruple from what they're paying. And then when you add on the utilities, a monthly utility bill, you really want the entire neighborhood to coalesce around like, we need water and sewer, because it's hard enough to do it on its own, but then if you are in a position where someone's holding out, it quickly makes the project cost ineffective. So I would strongly recommend to the council that it's, it's all or nothing if someone needs access to utilities.
Okay. So our assumption, then, would probably be that we would bypass this area and leave them be, I guess?
We'd probably, there'd probably be like a stub where we could connect it in the future, but we certainly wouldn't intentionally run utilities to service them with this project.
Okay. And even if, let's say, the whole neighborhood got together and said, oh yeah, we want city sewer and water, that still isn't really bearing on this. We would stub it out, that's for later.
Well, they could theoretically, if, like, let's just say the neighborhood had 20 homes, they could petition for annexation and follow that process. And if it dovetailed into our project and there are some efficiencies, they could do that. But again, we wouldn't want to do it where two out of the 20, or even half of them wanted to do it.
Okay. I don't, I mean, from some of the folks that I know up there, I don't foresee them wanting to come into the city anyways at this point to be annexed or to hook up, but I obviously can't speak for all of them.
Yeah, and Mayor and Council, I was just going to add, too, that anyone can petition to come in through the annexation agreement that we have with the township, but the city council ultimately gets to decide if it makes sense. You don't have to say, yes, we're going to annex you and adopt that resolution. That's not a mandatory thing for the city. So to Brent's point, I think 99% of the time, it's not going to make sense in those one-off situations. There could be a perfect set of circumstances where, oh yeah, this could make sense, but I, I don't think the city needs to feel compelled to do that if it doesn't, you know, make, make that good sense, so.
Okay. And how about the ones that are directly on 11? Could they hook up individually and just annex alone? Or is that because of how you stub, you'd still have to be running other lines, I guess?
It depends on the situation. There are like two or three homes that Mueller's owned that we provided service, but it depends on, you know, a whole host of factors. But like David mentioned, if the circumstances present themselves and it works, they can do it, but they would, they'd pay the full freight, just like anybody else, so there'd be trunk line charge, there'd be connection fee charges, the whole ball of wax.
Most of the, many of those rural town properties, as they currently exist, aren't necessarily in a super efficient location to be served by city sewer and water. They'd have to spend tens of thousands of dollars, if not more, just to get a private service line from the city's mains to their property. It usually makes sense for these things to happen in large developments with big chunks of land, where the developer's installing new streets and mains through the neighborhood and that kind of a thing. So, you know, I'd be surprised if it worked out, but the stars could align for a property or two.
Okay. And I think maybe then, as we move forward through this project, if we, if, you know, we start checking boxes here and then it's going forward, that maybe that's one of our communications, is that we are not forcing annexation of anyone, because I'm sure that there will be a few out there who will get nervous that that won't be something they're looking forward to.
Okay.
Ready? Okay. All right. So here's the big master plan that Summergate has provided for us. So the table on the right is the table that's in the upper left-hand corner, just blown up. So working through it, they've done a couple development scenarios, which I think is really helpful. So they show unit counts on the low end, the realistic, and then high. So you can see throughout the project, let's consider the realistic to be the number that we're going to use for round numbers. So the proposed unit count is 2,355 for the total project area. You'll see that there's a mix of uses. So the blue on the north side, closest to Mueller's, is an active senior community. And then moving down, yellow, is single family. Brown is higher density. Red is some mixed use. Green is the park that we have programmed in the parks master plan, so that pulls ball fields to this area with some additional infrastructure. So think about the black socks field being here, but also several other fields for T-ball and teams of every age. And then some additional park programming with, I think we have like some natural space, lots of trails. And then they also are calling out a school site. So that's not something that we're contemplating right now, nor is the school district, but we do believe in the future, Carver could be a good location for an additional school site. So preserving some space shows that we are interested in the idea and open with the developer to the school district to say, if and when you choose to move forward to the school location, we have an idea that might work for your community. So it's a lot to take in. It's a really large project, so know that this project is going to take several years, several phases, but it's a large mix of different types of users. So I'm going to talk through a little bit of some of the reviews that would be required for this project. Nope. Okay. I'm going to talk about phase one, actually. So Summergate has submitted phase one for annexation. So the area that is colored on the screen would be phase one. So you can see that it has the roundabout included that Brent mentioned. So at County Road 11, County Road 40, there would be a roundabout there. And then a mixed-use site, so think about potential small commercial users with some residential mixed in, a townhome product, and then single-family homes ranging from 50-foot lots to 60, so pretty typical for what we're seeing throughout Carver. So Lennar and Timber Creek offers both of those projects, products right now. So hitting a net density of 3.1 units per acre, which we'd be looking for. And then it's 80 townhomes, 37 50-foot lots, and 138 60-foot lots. So an overall 255 units presented in phase one. So this is the area that they are working towards right now. All property owners that are in phase one have signed the annexation application, so moving forward with this initial phase one annexation, concept plan, the planning commission, we'll see concept plan, you'll see concept plan, we'll move forward with a resolution for annexation for the city council to review. So moving into that, I just named the first three. And then, like Aaron alluded to, there needs to be a pretty substantial environmental impact for this type of project and the size of project. So above, an EAW, and above, an EIS, so above, an environmental assessment worksheet, and above, an environmental impact statement, is an alternate urban area-wide review, or an AUAR. So that process is, again, through the Environmental Quality Board. So it's the same group that reviews the EAW, provides the same information. It's a hybrid between the EAW and EIS, but you understand different development scenarios and how they affect the community. So it takes into account shifting some of the uses. What if there's more mixed use? What if there's less? What if it's all single-family, all townhomes? So it's a broader stroke at what might happen in the area. It's an adapted EAW form, but it's a level of analysis of an EIS. So you really drill into the large impacts of what a project of this size could have. It covers a wide area and it lives with the city, so we can update it. So as we learn more about the project, we could go back and update the AUAR, so it continues to be relevant even beyond the Summergate years. We could build off of it and continue to use this. We've been talking about it internally. It essentially creates like a tiny comprehensive plan for an area, so it shows where we think different things could go, how the roadway systems are going to shake out, what different users we might want to see in the area. But again, it lives with the city, can be updated. Did you want to add something? Okay. So going back, after the AUAR, it's a long process. We'd anticipate on a really quick review, probably nine months, more realistic, potentially a year for the AUAR process. And then moving through plating and rezoning would obviously be required. I would anticipate that they'd be looking for a PUD, just based P, PRD, sorry, which is unique to Carver, just for the different types of uses included in the project. So thinking about the single-family homes, townhomes, potentially mixed use, so bringing those all together, so. Again, the large concept plan is on the screen. You will start reviewing this in much smaller pieces. So again, phase one is 255 units. We'll start to learn more about the unit counts as we start moving through the phases, so that those numbers are anticipated to change. But I think sticking with the realistic is probably the best option for all of us right now, that it's just middle of the road. Could go either way, but that feels like a spot that we can come to, come to some consensus.
Aaron, what part was phase one, the southern-ish part?
So it's here.
I think it's, so it's at the?
It's this area.
By the jog to on County Road 11?
Correct. Yep. So our annexation agreement, we want to keep properties generally contiguous with city limits, so it's across County Road 11 at that intersection to our current city limits with Overlook Drive. So again, phase one, we're not looking for any action on phase one tonight. We just wanted to get it in front of you. Again, at an upcoming, upcoming meeting likely in April, we'll invite Casey to come for a formal concept plan review. You can provide feedback, but a project of this magnitude and scale, we found it appropriate to get it before you. As a project preview, you can start digesting some of the information, start thinking about it, and the comments you might have at a concept plan level review. So something else to note is that the overall densities for the project hit the requirements that we need. So for the low end of the spectrum, it's 3.7 units per acre, up to 6.9 at the high number of units that they're proposing for the three different scenarios. Middle's at about 4.8. So for the different use types, hitting that density we need from the Met Council of three units per acre, potentially four with our next comp plan iteration. So I'll open it up for comments, questions. Again, we're not anticipating you to have grand ideas at this point. We just wanted to share the information with you before an upcoming concept plan review with Summergate.
All right, Council, questions, comments? Eric, anything from you?
No. Aaron, thanks for bringing it forward. You know, as we're, our first discussion we had about space and planning for public works and utilities, this is why. Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Nothing here?
Nothing.
Okay. You know, I think we have talked about this for so long, and you've always referred to Casey from Summergate, and it's almost like he was a mythical creature until we met him within the last year. And to see this project come to fruition is just wild. The only feedback that I have that's kind of dancing around in the back of my mind is as we look at this, and this is a really, really large project, and I've shared this feedback with you before, but I would love to see us figure out a way to get some larger lots in here. We kind of talk about how Carver, we pride ourselves in having a variety of housing. We've got multifamily housing. We've got low density. We've got high density. But I would love to see something more on the estate lot side for a luxury home. And I don't think that we're going to have the opportunity to do it until we try to get it into something like this, that's a larger development. And I think that, I don't think we can talk about diversity in housing if we're only talking about one end of the spectrum. So I would love to see whatever we can do to try to get that in to something like this, knowing that we have the numbers here. In my mind, there's a better chance to make the math work out than trying to figure it out in a smaller, really, anything smaller than this. It would be hard to make the arithmetic flush out.
I agree with you. I think we need to run the gamut of housing from high density to ultra-low density, I guess we'll call it that. When we're looking at the density levels, though, that's an overall for the city. So I think that, right, we're averaging out our density levels through the entire city of Carver proper, when we're looking at Met Council needed numbers.
That has been the feedback we've gotten from the Met Council to date.
Okay. So I think that if we are going to do it, this is probably, you're correct, this is probably the, the spot to make that happen.
And to be clear, I'm not talking a seven-acre lot necessarily here, like, that's potentially more of what you want to find in, you know, if that's what you're looking for, you'll find that in the township still. But I think a little bit larger to give a little bit more room and options. So that's all I have. Thank you. All right, communications. Eric, do you want to go first?
I don't have anything, unfortunately. I missed the last Southwest Transit meeting, so nothing for me.
All right.
Laurie?
Just a thank you to the residents that applied for different commission. It was great to see the engagement, so appreciate everyone throwing their name in there.
I don't have anything besides asking, do we have an HPC meeting coming up next week? It'll be canceled.
Okay. Kayla?
I have nothing.
All right. I have a little bit of a laundry list again tonight. I echo your sentiment, Laurie, and I meant to mention it when we were going through commission nominations. I think this was an amazingly great problem to have. Another term for it is embarrassment of riches, like eight applications for two slots, eight inner seats, two slots, and even more applications than that was really, really, really fantastic. And to have a hard time making that decision is hard, but it's exactly what we want. And I could be wrong, but it's been a long, long time since we have had all the slots on the HPC filled, if not the first time since we've been on council, but it's definitely been.
It's been a little while.
A little while, more than a little while, so.
They're pretty fun.
Just looking back the last couple of weeks, on February 20th, I was interviewed by the Southwest Chamber for a video project that they're working on about the benefits of Chamber membership. That should be on a social media post of your choice coming up soon. There is also a League of Minnesota Cities meeting that, we got a legislative update, and I meant to make copies of this. If you guys are interested, you can either take a look, or I can make copies for you to take home. But we got a legislative update on housing policy. And this is the issue that was a little bit more than a sticky wicket last year, and the year before that, and the year before that, if you remember that. The league is taking a little bit more of a different stance this year in trying to figure out what does work, instead of just kind of coming at the issue with a hard no, and trying to come up with a little bit more compromise this year. So the updates were that there were, there are seven bills kind of in play right now. It's early in the legislative session, so that could still change, but a bunch of different issues that the folks in the state legislature are taking an issue on. Another really interesting thing is that the league partnered with the Association of Minnesota Counties and did a study on the challenges and opportunities facing local governments in hiring folks. Seems like there's a little bit of a labor shortage, and we've struggled in the city of Carver to hire for certain positions. So this is just kind of the, the study update, but I can email you guys the entire study if that's something that you were interested in. Let's see. February 21st, we had a Southwest Corridor Transportation Committee meeting. We got an update on Highway 212, an update on Highway 5, and then there was an overview on the 2025 projects. And my goodness, there's going to be a lot of construction in Carver County, and especially on the eastern side, on our side of the county. So there's going to be a roundabout going in at County Road 11 and Pioneer Trail and Marsh Lake Road, kind of as you're going to Victoria. So it's going to be a little bit trickier to get to Victoria the summer from Carver. County Road 10 or Engler in Chaska is going to be, they're going to be putting in, I think, four roundabouts there. So that is going to be under construction roughly, roughly, roughly from 212 to the community center. And then County Road 5 and 11 in Victoria, there's going to be construction at intersections there, too. So we're putting construction in construction season this summer. Also, on the 21st, we had a Carver Also, on the twenty-first, we had a Carver Business Alliance meeting where we got business updates and then talked about growth. Aaron was able to give kind of a high-level preview of what we heard about tonight for Summergate. On February twenty-second, I was part of the League of Minnesota Cities newly elected leader panel, same thing where Kayla was. Cato, this one was in Plymouth. Last Friday, Representative Emmer has a monthly conference call, participated in that. And then looking ahead, and we talked about it a little bit earlier tonight, but Thursday is the League of Minnesota Cities Day at the Capitol, which I'll be attending. There's also a hearing that day, which Representative Harder very graciously got us into, where I'll be testifying in front of the House Capital Investment Committee in favor of in support of our levy funding bill. So I'm trying to get those folks to give us some more money.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. So a little serendipitous that it will be in the day that we'll already be in St. Paul. Really great. So it's not two days of PTO. But excited to, to do that and looking forward to that. So that is it for my updates. With that, there's nothing else. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Always makes me nervous. Thanks to Kayla for the motion and Kristi for the second. Any further discussion? Oh, we don't have to do that. It's good. Can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pascoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Councilmember Sayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Pershman?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Good evening, everybody.